I'd like to call to order the Mount Plus Public School Board of Education by giving a meeting at night fifteen, two thousand twenty-four at six thirty P M in our high school cafeteria. This meeting of the Mount Plus Public Schools Board of Education is a meeting conducted in public, but is not a meeting of the public. There is a line for public participation during the meeting as indicated in the agenda. The purpose of today's meeting is to conduct regular business that requires action by the law. These items may include those discussed at previous meetings or presented to the board by discussion. As a courtesy, please turn off the sirens, your phones, and spend for our pleasure meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we're going to read our indigenous and acknowledgement statements. The Mount Plus Public Schools is honored to acknowledge the Nisheneti people, whose traditional land we are gathered on today. To recognize the Nisheneti people and their ancestral land is our expression of gratitude and appreciation in a way of honoring the indigenous people who have been living and working on this land since standing in oil and whose land on which the Saginaw Chippewa Indian tribe has resided and has continued to reside for centuries. We feel it is important to understand the longstanding history of this land and to seek to understand our place within that history. I'm also going to remind all of us that as board members, we've committed to our new educational governance agreements. If you'd like a full copy of what this is, send the table to the door. And there are four five headers that we spent having. It's professionalism, respect, and equity, inclusive collaboration, responsibility to a forward-looking vision, dedication to community engagements, and a commitment to continuous growth. This time, we're going to do our local.
Can we ban here?
Will you cradle here?
Tim Motiker here.
Melissa Isaac-Monti here.
Nathan Johnson here.
Jessica Jordan in here.
Thank you, everybody. First thing we have to do is improve our agenda.
So.
All in paper?
I don't know.
In your paws? Thank you. And then this is us to our super, uh, super staff report for the night.
Good evening, everyone. The first item on my report is our annual update from the athletic department. It's on our D C R district athletic director Jason MacIntyre. Thanks for being here, Jason.
Yep, thanks for having me tonight. Appreciate being here. Uh, I want to talk about this past season, last year. Uh, I know my second year was a lot easier and different than it was the first year. So, um, lots of things to talk about. Uh, as you can see on the first part of the report there is just the offerings. These are the standard offerings we've had, uh, for quite a while here on Pleasant, uh, both the middle school and the high school level. Uh, one, one note, the M H S A has approved new sports next year, um, both boys volleyball and girls field hockey. That does not mean we will offer those sports, but it will give us opportunity to kind of put a few words out to see if that's something we will want to do in the future. There are numerous, uh, M H S A sports that we don't offer due to the size of our schools. Such as water polo and different things that our schools have, but, um, but it does add something to the possibility. I hope boys volleyball is really growing throughout the state and that's something that maybe we possibly can see in the future here on Pleasant, so. Uh, participation numbers, um, you can see that, uh, one thing at the, at the middle school you should know is we did have a change in, I talked about last year, a change in seasons, uh, where, um, the girl sports switched volleyball, basketball switched, and I think that might be one of the reasons for a slight drop in our numbers because in the fall, um, a lot of people don't travel. Girls soccer is, uh, competes heavily with a lot of our sports, so we need our girls mass involved in the fall, and, um, and we saw a little decrease in numbers there, but, um, numbers are still strong there. I'm really excited about our numbers in the high school. We have forty-two percent of our student body involved in our athletic programs, um, has an increase of fourteen percent of two years ago, um, which is a big, big jump, and it's up again from last year. So, uh, we did see more students, uh, participating, which we all know is a benefit to the culture of the building as well as our student athletes as well. So, uh, excited about that. Uh, I'm not going to dive into the details of all the data there, but I, like I said last year, I'm a former science teacher, so charts and graphs are kind of fun to put together, but, uh, if you have any questions about that, I think in terms of how many of our student athletes are one sport, two sports, three sports, it's pretty much in line with where it was a year ago. We're still trying to increase the multi-sport part of what we do, uh, both in our participation e-structure, some of the awards we give out and things like that, so we're continuing to try to increase on that. Uh, we are number of the Sagmo Valley League. Um, you can see where we stand in regards to enrollment within the Sagmo Valley League. You can see we're kind of in the bottom quarter, uh, of that league. I, I joke, we have one of the most interesting leagues in the entire state of Michigan, um, both in terms of the, most leagues are either geographic or bipolar. You could take a league, and almost all schools are the exact same size, so they're very close to one another. Um, we kind of, our beat of those, um, a lot that has to do with the locations of larger schools and areas where there are a lot of large schools around. You should know, we always continue to look at the future of where we are and confidence in how it fits and what's best for our student athletes, which is travel and other things. The Traverse City schools have applied to try to be in our league in all sports, um, and when people first hear that, they blink, they cramp, blink to Traverse City, but really that would create two divisions if that was to happen, which would benefit us quite a bit. We would no longer travel to the Flint area just about any sport, which would deal with the northern schools and then add to Traverse City, which we play in a number of sports already. So, that's kind of in the works. We'll see if it happens. Uh, Pleasant said definitely a yes vote on that and what's to, what's to come to vote. In terms of academics, real proud of this, uh, seventy-six percent of our female athletes are scholar athletes, um, and that's about the same as where we're last year. We had a big jump in our male athletes, sixty-six percent of our male athletes this last season were scholar athletes. That's a community of a few points we are higher, uh, so we continue to emphasize the student part of student athlete, and we continue to see that. Uh, and you probably are already aware of this, but Avi Abner, a card role, are our S B L student athletes of the year, and they were, uh, we have a little banquet every year where we, um, do a real nice presentation in regards to that, so. Uh, we had a number of, um, coach, you know, like, like the academic side of our district, there's personnel that's continuing to see our department as well, and we had four new varsity head coaches this year. I think that's probably a fairly unusual number, um, and varsity head numbers, so you can see who those were. And right now, we're in good shape even this year, but, uh, it's always a challenge at the middle school and sub varsity levels to, uh, keep coaches for a long period of time, and that's always our goal, so. Uh, some of the really, uh, notable recognitions throughout the season, uh, there's some individual ones there, some conference championships, uh, you know, highlighted by some of our state qualifiers in some of our sports, and you can see those. We have a couple of A E Ps in the league, it's really, um, individual accomplishments throughout the year, individual sports as well, so. We had thirteen student athletes commit to compete at the top collegiate level in a variety of sports. We had our first bowling commitment, which is exciting. Uh, you know, I, I always enjoy, there's a lot of sports, sometimes people don't know what offers, just bowling, and, uh, we have someone who committed to go to, uh, play at the police level bowling. Uh, you can see there's a number of other, uh, student athletes who have committed as well. One of the things that took us last year that was probably the most, uh, different from the past is the number of events we hosted that were not our own events this last year. This was a, uh, maybe again as the A D in a second year, and I don't have to say no, um, but, uh, we hosted a large number of M H S events. This is a real benefit to us, um, we get part of the revenue, uh, as well as our concessions. We all encourage boosters, all that concession money. Some of these are very large events, uh, very well done. So, it is a benefit, but, um, it was taxi kind of our department personnel-wise, most of our workers are volunteers, and so, um, I don't think you'll see this long of this next year, uh, especially in the spring. Spring was very, very, but I would say that whole bottom half, from the track championships down, those were all spring events. So, spring was very busy in the athletic department this year, so. But again, it was, uh, we, it helped generate revenue and, and really show off our beautiful facilities that we have as well, like a track, got quite a bit of use this year, and our best field track championships were there, and we got nothing but really, really good reviews and, and comments on how nice the track was, so, um, so it's nice to show off the new things we've been doing this year. A couple of last things here, um, just to end your notes, um, a lot of the same things we did in, in my first year, we're still trying to improve on, and athletic ones are getting a lot better. Uh, we continue with ways to promote what our student athletes are doing, as I've said before. A lot of us are a generation that could open up a newspaper every morning when you were in high school and see what your school is doing. We don't have that as much anymore, so we're looking at different ways that we could promote that, whether it's through social media, um, but there's a, a new group, a new social media slash webpage coming this year called the Nishenet Sports Network that is looking to promote a lot of the local schools and what they're doing, and will, that'll be an opportunity for us to jump over and do that. Uh, we had a student come up with a great idea, a local school does this, we, we have a twelve sport board for our student that we have at graduation this year. Somebody noticed this for any senior who got, played three sports for four years. So, there are only five, um, student athletes this past year, but they wear a twelve sport board, so we continue to do that. We're going to add a three-sport pin for varsity jackets, uh, to kind of promote that multi-sport participation. I think, and lastly, as we look into the next year, the big emphasis for our department is going to be safety. Uh, it's, it's something that, um, we spent a lot of time in academic, in the millions, and you don't, you think about it from a, from a, in the settings of athletics, how chaotic athletics is, we don't, we need to really improve on our action plans at the athletic events. The M H S A is guiding this. We will practice this with our student athletes this year. So, the coaches, I was just telling, without type or schedule, we'll take fifteen minutes of the start of practice, your mind number, A E Ps are what we would do in these situations. We would do this, you know, for example, what I heard in a conference this year is, for example, swimming. Uh, you know, if you're in a pool swimming, the A E is probably in the hallway, and swimming pools are, they're mandatory, they're locked, those doors are locked all the time. So, if someone had to allow to get an A E, they would be locked out of the pool, so you need your nine A, you need two people responsible to go get that, one to hold the door, one to get. So, those are the kind of things we'll discuss and look at individually with each sport because, unlike a single building, we have a lot of venues and a lot of things, a lot of differences, you know, is there an A E available, what, all those kinds of things. So, that's the very emphasis we're moving this year, um, and, and we're going to work hard on that, and hopefully out in our court next year we'll have a big use in regards to some of the changes in that. So, at this point, I'll go with any questions and answers.
This isn't really a question, I think I probably know the answer, but I'm assuming that having all of these events come to our community is really good for local businesses too.
Absolutely. Uh, you know, take, for example, uh, whether it be the S B L track championships or, uh, regional softball, you know, that's an all-day event with multiple teams here, and those teams sit, they're under local businesses, they grab their lunch in between hosting, so it's, it's a real, but one of the things I, I, other thing I've done last year is on part of the, the sports commission is multi-sports, which I go to their meetings, and, uh, and we kind of talk about what venues we have available for them to use, uh, for our local events as well. Again, show off the nice things we've done as a district here for, uh, in terms of what we have, and so, yes, very personal.
I've got one question and a few comments. Scholar athletes, we might have been told this before, but can you remind us what sports they play?
Uh, yes, uh, so, and we have a formula for that, if anyone wonders, it's based on a number of varsity letters, uh, G P A test scores, and it's equal frame of formula, so it takes kind of the personal decision-making out of the process, but, uh, Avi was, um, basketball, volleyball, and track, you know, and then Carter was football, basketball, baseball, you know, and so they played all four years of those. Avi, Avi was a tremendous tracker, sorry she, uh, she made the statement, all four years she was a tracker, so.
Amazing, congratulations to them, and then congratulations to you, um, on the S B L coach of the year, saw you gloss over that, but it's, uh, worth sharing, um, so congratulations to you and, um, my former, uh, science teacher, I believe, yep. Um, and then I also want to thank you and say thank you for identifying areas of improvement and bringing that forth, but also bringing forth lots of like possible solutions and kind of your plans for coming up with that. I, I really appreciate that.
I wanted to thank you all for working within there. I think, uh, it was really nice to see the improvement of the communication that since you've joined, um, especially, uh, final forms and kind of how everybody's embraced that. I know from parents coming to us that the process is really wild.
Yeah.
So, thank you for all those bits. Uh, it, it's nice to hear the emphasis on safety, that you're able to come, spend a week to care about that.
Yeah, we don't want to be on the bad side of the news, like, so, yeah. All right, thank you, everybody.
I'll just point out to you all on our new business, we will be asking to work to approve the M H S A resolution for participation. That's what our leadership will do every year. Um, it has to be approved by office first, then we can participate as an M H S A member school for the next four years. So, Jason, I don't know, is that anything different with that?
I'll, it just, it became that we're going to follow their rules and their bylaws when it comes to participation in tournaments and things like that, and, uh, our coaches will be certified under their regulations, and that's just the same thing we have to do every year.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Next on my report is a report from the diversity, equity, inclusion task force, and I'll, we've got the task force members and we'll, we'll represent, I think they're ready to start. And I will run this report. Hello, actually, this is Haggel, uh, Volhagel is going to start. And Volhagel, our teacher at Little School. Uh, so, we represent, uh, a larger task force, and you can see, I can go back to the slideshow, but the task force itself is huge, it consists of administrators, teachers, community members, and coordinators, um, so I won't be censoring, but that's all of us. Um, and just as a reminder, our charge has been to make recommendations to increase cultural awareness, diversity, equity, and inclusion across the school district. Um, and then within, within this task force, we had kind of two goals for this year. Um, we wanted to shift our thinking in December away from grinding and into recommendations. We made kind of, last year was, was a, we functioned a lot differently this year than we did last year, um, and that was one of the things that made the biggest difference, I think, is that we shifted our thinking a little bit, and we also want to make sure that we had a online presence. And this is a link to our online presence, it's on the district website, and then this is just a screenshot of like the homepage, um, but you can see there are, um, a lot of things, and it is something that is, is and will continue to grow, um, as we change and grow. Um, the task force itself does a lot of, um, outside training. It's inter, I mean, we don't go through things together, but we have a book, we have, um, training that we have been looking through, equity, diversity institute is something that we took last year and this year, and went through, um, a number of modules, um, as a task force. The book, we started a book club this year, and we're just about through it, and we'll continue next year, um, it is building equity. That was our recommendation, actually, I'm not sure what that recommendation came from, I don't want to miss anything. But we have, it, on the slideshow, we have a link to like a, I won't call it one page because it's much more than that, but like a summary of the book itself. As we read through it and as we go through the task force, um, I'm just kind of putting it together, an outline of what the book, uh, the main points of the book. This is also to help future members of the task force, um, so that they, as we continue to learn more and add more resources, they would have that instead of having to read the whole book. Um, and then the education, justice, assessment, and transformation tool, which is called the E J A T, um, that is another one that's very big. Our administrators went to conferences this past school year, I believe, and it's, uh, this was a big focus for that, and it's something that's been really helpful for us. So, that document is one that we recommend on every basis. So, this year, the, the task force looked at, um, seven topics, uh, or six topics really, and then we had an additional one that we added. Um, the, you can see the list there, we talked about holding students, bringing students into our D E I work, um, Valentine's Day fundraising, pronouns, the N word at the middle school, inclusive work in the classroom, and putting recommendations in place for public improvement opportunities. So, we'll go through each one of those a little bit more detail. One of the biggest changes that I think we're most proud of this year is, uh, the process that we used to discuss the issues. Um, last year, we were really getting our feet wet and, and figuring things out. This year, we decided to try to follow the process that you see here. Um, we asked administrators and the task force members, um, if they have any issues that they feel need to be addressed. Uh, I think in the future, we hope to extend that more to the community, or at least provide a, provide a forum for that, but right now we have one on the standpoint already. Um, the first thing we look at is what our district is already doing, and then we look at what our training sense, so we look at the E J A T, and we look at, um, any resources that task force members might bring, and then we try to look into what our districts are doing, and then we try to formulate what our recommendation, um, might be. This sounds like a quick process, but actually, many of the topics took us a number of meetings to get through the process, and we had often times we would revisit, um, to make sure that we had consensus before we really felt that we were recommending anything. So, the first recommendation that we had, um, that came up is holding students into our D E I work. Um, one of the things that the district is already doing is, and it's not directly related to D E I, but it kind of provides a platform, is there are, at the middle school and the high school, there are, um, there are like listening sessions that are going on with the board members and students, certain groups of students, and so that's one thing that we are already doing. And we have the recommendations, the task force, um, would like to see a student advisory board for all of the school buildings, um, to make sure that, um, the diversity of student base, and making sure that the board matches the diversity of the student body. I want to bring the E J A T content and some appropriate training to the student council at the middle school and the senate at the high school. And then we have, through the surveys that have been done, um, at the schools, we've identified that there are, uh, there's an interest in having D E I clubs at the middle and high school, and so it's something that we recommend, uh, using at the middle school and high school at this point. Our next recommendation has to do with Valentine's Day. The district is already moving away from bringing things from home, um, trying to be more equitable, affectable with regards to that, moving away from a heterosexual perspective on the day, and instead focusing on kindness and love as, as it's broadly defined. This year, the, I'm pretty sure all of the middle school in particular did a huge kindness. We have really put up with her kindness as opposed to focusing on, on Valentine's Day. Um, the four recommendations we have as regards to that are to make sure that efforts are consistent across all the classrooms and all of the buildings. We recommend communication is something that I think we have all found is helpful, um, sending a letter or something to the district, uh, to parents and families explaining the direction that the district is taking, um, with this, so that the messaging is consistent. Uh, we'd like to continue efforts to be emphasize the heterosexual nature of the holiday, and we recommend keeping an eye on fundraising efforts, um, so that it is inclusive for all participants. I think each building probably has their own, um, fundraising efforts that they do, and so we would recommend to keep an eye on that, and that makes for further recommendations. So, along the line of fundraising, just making sure that we are looking at all of our fundraising across the district through, um, kind of the lens for everybody to be included. So, we already have fundraising events, um, but we don't have a clear pathway or flowchart or process that we use yet to make sure that everybody is, um, looking at that and making sure that we're including everybody. So, we're going to, um, kind of build a decision tree for administrators and our parent, future involvement, um, committees, so that they have kind of a good process to make sure that whatever fundraising event they're trying to put in place, that, um, it's making sure that it's, it's inclusive for everyone. Also, kind of looking at requesting a short description of the intent of the fundraising, so that we can make sure as it goes through the shorter length decision tree that every, um, aspect or piece of the fundraising is being looked at. The fourth one is, um, implementation of appropriate use of pronouns and names. We already have, um, strong district policies that we've been working through and sharing with our staff, um, to make sure that we're honoring pronouns, but also, um, honoring name changes as well. Uh, recommendations, offering training for administrators, specifically modeling how to interrupt, um, an employee that might be misusing pronouns or maybe not, um, using the, the same, the correct name when the name has been asked of them, and, um, also really working on including the names, but also the pronunciation as well. That is something that's very important, um, to be inclusive for all of our students too and staff. Um, number five then is the use of the N word and other racial slurs. Um, the district already does, um, education of this with using, um, efforts on like a power of words that hurt or words that heal, um, or using some of the lower buildings. Everyone uses the second step program, uh, for socially emotional, and then we also use restorative circles as well, uh, but we do want to continue the education of this, um, and continue our implementation of the restorative circles, but looking at some sort of curriculum or standardized type of education to move into, um, into our curriculum and into the students, and especially at the middle school level, um, even maybe, you know, the fifth grade level is moving up into the high school. This is something that we're continuing to discuss. We already have implemented some of that last school year, but this is something that we do need to hit, um, even a little bit harder as we continue to move forward. This also is a piece of, um, kind of that part where some things are okay to be done inside outside of school, and some things are, um, need to be different when we're inside school, so there's some parent communication on this as well. So, number six. The sixth recommendation has to do with inclusive group work in the classroom, um, and one thing I'll mention sort of as you go through the recommendations, they vary in scope, which I think is really important, like some are big policy changes and some are practices that can be changed within the classroom, you know, from teacher to teacher, and we know that sorting students into groups can sometimes be a bit of a vulnerable time when students can be left out for various reasons. The district is already, um, doing some work around group work, um, but there's not been specific professional development on this. There are some sections in capturing kids' hearts recently, uh, but one of the recommendations is just sort of keeping this in the forefront of teachers' minds with additional, um, professional development. And number seven is really the umbrella up in terms of, um, putting these recommendations into practice. And when we talk about like shifting from grinding to recommending, we discovered that when we meet for one or two hours once a month, like, we can talk through these issues and start to think about recommendations, but there is a lot of work to be done, like doing the work takes time, resources, expertise, and those sorts of things, so the recommendation is, um, you know, to take the time and, uh, take the time and effort, um, to put into practice these recommendations, acknowledging that teachers and administrators are often stretched quite thin. We also recognize the complications of budgets and personnel, and yet, um, if the district is serious about D E I efforts, then the resources are time or money to, um, the recommendation is either making it part of current positions, if we're redistributing some responsibilities, or a D E I position that would be dedicated to, uh, D E I work to put these recommendations into practice. I think that versus. Oh, except for the fact that we have openings next year, and so if anyone wants to return, that's great, but also, um, we would really welcome other community members to join, I think. I am a, I'm Carter, as you mentioned, I'm Carter Little Porsha, I'm glad I'm a parent of children in the district, and I think it's really important to have the diversity of the district, you know, represented on this board. Thank you. If you have any questions, we'll do our best to answer them, but we also represent a task force that we don't necessarily want to speak for, um, but if we have a question, we can take it back to them next year.
Do you have a couple of questions? First, thank you for coming forward and sharing things. I'm going to just run out of the last section, because this is going to be a long story. The book club, is that open? Is that only open to people on the task force?
Right now, that's all we've done, right now.
Yes. Uh, recommendation number one was there, timeline for that one, that was, uh, holding students in the D E I work.
We did already, um, we did already start some of the, uh, kind of listening circles or whatever last year at the end of the school year, some of the board members, um, came in and met with, um, students at the middle school and high school, but I think that we would definitely, the timeline on that roughly would be like, how can we continue that work, but then how can we continue to build more in as we continue throughout this school year?
Okay.
So, when I think of the timeline, it would definitely be continued, but then, you know, how can we add more?
And this is just a recommendation, this isn't, we aren't, um, capable of implementing anything, but it's just a recommendation.
Okay. Number four. This was the one about pronouns.
Okay.
I don't even notice, can we put that on applications for the students now? Like, as a parent, can we put that on, uh, yearly things that?
Applications like to come into the school district?
Yes.
So, for like enrollment?
Yes, enrollment, thank you.
Our, um, I don't believe that our enrollment paperwork currently has something for pronouns, um, but we have, like, at the middle school, I'm not much speaking for, we just have our process where if a student, sometimes if a parent already knows that that's what the student's request is, they will just tell us when they come to like open house, or they'll come and have a meeting, something like that, or the student usually advocates, um, for themselves and then asks for that, and then we have a process that we follow internally, uh, once a student says like, I like this pronoun or this name change, then our counselors work through kind of a process with the students, make sure that we kind of have a sole like communication out to the teachers, so it's not, I mean, some of the students will just tell the teachers, but where it's definitely, um, that would make sure everybody has been communicated with, that's just, we like to streamline that communication. So, is that on there, um, currently?
So.
It's not currently, I haven't had. So, we could definitely put that on our list to discuss.
To add to that discussion too, I know that, um, this is a very delicate topic to, um, have that on the packet, and I don't know what that And I don't know what that would do to the internal process for parents who feel very strongly, one way or the other. So I would caution that and maybe take that into consideration while you're having that discussion.
Absolutely. There's a balance between being inclusive and welcoming and advocacy for sure.
I just have one more. So Dr. Carla, is that, that's you right? Okay?
Yes, call me Carla.
Okay, Carla. I was just going to ask about recommendation number five, where your name was in there. I just, no, whatever it now. I remember I said you said it at the end. Okay.
Okay, yeah. I've done some work on anti-racist teaching in a predominantly white context. And so I've done professional development in other communities and would just really like volunteer services when people are interested and ready. I know it takes a lot of time to put together curriculum. Teachers have to be ready for that work. But I would love to be involved in whatever the next steps are.
Thank you.
I have a, I think it's going to be just a suggestion. So it's related to the timeline and I'm looking at always understand that, you know, you can't make people do these things or have the authority to mandate any of this. But because it's important work, I think that I'm looking at it like, yeah, great idea, great idea. And how would I do that? What would be the inclusive timeframe? So it would be cool to see some kind of sample timeline, somebody who's maybe new and really is well trained and wants to do this. What does that look like throughout the course of the school year as far as individual teacher is concerned? And I don't know if that's helpful. You can come up with some other things. But I would like to see that in front of me like, okay, I do this and I do this so that I could develop that over the course of the year as far as professionals are concerned. I think that might be helpful instead of here's this thing and then it's just kind of left hanging there. Because we can be inspired by it, but then how do we put that into practice?
As we were working through the year, that's kind of what we ran into our seventh recommendation is that we felt that there was a lot of work to do. And the task force itself, like the comment said, just maybe once a month for half and half was, we were struggling internally with, because everybody is excited and wants to do the work. But at the same time, we needed to be able to process a number of things.
Sorry, I missed number seven. Exactly what you said, number seven.
That's okay. Well, I would say too, like some of the recommendations are different in scope. So like being inclusive with group work probably is something that could be incorporated, a much quicker timeline, a professional development at the beginning of the year. That doesn't take heavy lifting. But then there are some other recommendations that are more systemic, will involve administrators and administrators implementing it in their buildings, making sure the buildings are consistent and those sorts of things. And one of the things that we've run into is districts this size often have someone who is dedicated to doing this work because it is, it is heavy lifting in some cases. And those are exactly the kinds of concrete, some of the concrete leadership and details that will make a difference from just being a recommendation to being practiced. Yeah, for sure.
I would just like to know how well the recommendations align with our new mission and vision that we just created, especially when it comes to engaging students and involving students. So thank you. Thank you, everybody.
The next item on my report is just a continuation of the discussion of the Sex Ed Advisory Board bylaws. I wanted to be sure to put that on the agenda of the seatings so that we all have the opportunity to discuss it again should there be any additional questions.
Well, I can provide a little bit of a recap.
Before.
So we've been working on these bylaws. There was a recommendation from the Sex Ed Advisory Board, who had created a bylaws committee, that bylaw committee met, came up with this structure and then took it to the Sex Ed Advisory Board. They provided their recommendation of what they felt that the bylaws should be to this board. And we voted on the, a version of their recommendation in April. After that, approval by this board in April, April 15th. The Sex Ed Advisory Board felt that they wanted to recommend some changes to that bylaw. That was, those bylaws from the Sex Ed Advisory Board that were approved. In our last board meeting, there was a letter that was provided to us and presented to us, the recommendations of the change of what they would like us to modify the approved bylaws. Those are in your drives under the last board meetings files under their documents. So if you'd like to pull up that letter, I will try to, there it is. There was a lot of information in the letter. They had a team, the whole Sex Ed Advisory Board had a long conversation about what they felt in areas that they wanted to recommend that we modify the approved bylaws from April 15th. And so they provided a letter with kind of their thing, their thinking, what the thinking of the Sex Ed Advisory Board was and kind of their stance on those key areas. And that was all incorporated in this letter that was presented to us again at that last meeting. So I'm going to try to do some high points of the letter. You can, we've already seen it in the, in the, in the board meeting. And so one of the recommendations that they would, that came back from the Sex Ed Advisory Board was that there was concern about us having a student having a vote on the Sex Ed Advisory Board. Not changing, but not changing having their presence on the Sex Ed Advisory Board. And they have their justification there. I will go through all of their justifications of why they felt that was important. Another issue that they brought up was the structures. There was concern about the, so just to, everyone knows in general, this is regulated by state law. And then we have policies within the district that reflect state law, but it also codifies a lot of that state law components to it. And in that law, state law, there is specific prescribed populations that you have to have and numbers that have to be represented and the sex, on the Sex Ed Advisory Board. And so one of those was the proportion of parents to non-parents on the board was another concern that they had and with the structures that we provided with the numbers might make that difficult. And so it was the allowing students to be on the Sex Ed Advisory Board, but not having them the right to vote. Currently in our bylaws, they are on, they have to run a vote. The next one was the consistency of the structures. The number that they recommended may not work well with this parent to non-parent relationship. Some of the people on the board are double-handed, we'll call. So they actually have two roles that they kind of satisfy some of these requirements that we have by state law. And then, I think it was the main points in the letter.
I didn't move the letter into this.
Yeah, pretty close. Am I missing something?
Yes, these were all voted, I'm Christina Hud, sorry.
I'm sorry.
I wasn't planning it. So I'm Christina Hud. I happen to be here. I am the current co-chair, recommended, voted on, upcoming chair. It was a purple. I was also on the committee for the bylaws creation. And we did vote on all of these components that were presented in this letter. And then the letter was shown to the committee before it was presented to the superintendent's office as well as the boards. So I think that's important to know as well. These, each of these is not that necessarily disagreement or what. It was more to remain consistent with the voting numbers in our board.
Are you ready for the discussion?
That sounded good.
So did we ever clarify the interpretation of the parent aspect? I know that was like a majority of my concern, but the recommendation as far as like 15% parents and kind of how that was interpreted in that letter and how I was reading it from the law didn't seem consistent. Do we get a response to that?
I can tell you that it's my understanding that the law is silent on whether or not there are typical teachers who are parents. They also qualify as parents. It has not been a practice in the Sex Ed Advisory Board up to now for teachers who are also parents to become as parents. I don't think that's in the law. I also think that it's, you know, in my own research, it's really not best practice to have people wear tux hats. I know that in the past, just getting people on the Sex Ed Advisory Board has been hard. And that in that case, you know, we might need people just to make up, to wear tux hats as a word to make up the numbers. But if I recall, the last time we had applicants for Sex Ed Advisory Board, there were more than 20 people who applied. So I don't necessarily think that's an issue.
The reason why I'm asking that is because we did the math. And it's not, it's not problematic if it's interpreted one way. But in the latter way, it was interpreted, it was identified as problematic. And that's what I want to know is, what I'm reading in the law, and I heard that a lot of the last meeting, I can do it again, is that at least half of the members of the Sex Education Advisory Board shall be parents. Who have a child attending a school operated by the district, comma. And the majority of that 50% shall be, well, I don't see 50%, so the majority of these parent members, which is 50%, shall be individuals who are not employed by the school district. So what we went through in that letter, how the folks were identified, four of the, and we rounded up to six, were indeed parents. It was a majority. So I didn't really understand what the problem was when we did the math and we applied the math to it. So that's just kind of where.
My understanding and legal interpretation is that, as Tim mentioned, there are, or members that are dual-handed, right? But you cannot count, count, I guess, you cannot be a district employee and come toward the parent ratio.
I, I'm not sure that that's the case. I think it, we couldn't, maybe you couldn't count all of them, but some of them you can count. It just can't be the majority of the parents can't be, a majority of them also have to not be employed by the district. But it's not exactly the same thing as none of them. I also just like to add to this discussion that the total number of people on the board, I won't say it's periphery, but it is something that we are choosing. It is not, that's not something that's codified by law at all. So if the math doesn't work, we have total freedom to change the number of people on the Sex Ed Advisory Board.
So currently we have 11 seats. And in that letter, there's actually a breakdown of the current, the mixture of what they do and some of the double counts, right? So for example, there are two clergy who are also parents. So they kind of satisfy the clergy component of it and the parent, non-districts employee, parent proportion of it. And so that is something that we can do is then we can always increase by, let's say a seat. And that is one of the challenges that they were having. Also just to highlight, there is a review process of those who keep engaged on the Sex Ed Advisory Board. And they created a process to keep people engaged in that, to make sure that they're taking part in the conversation and not just people who are falling off. And then some of these things were not satisfied, these rules. And so that is one of the things that they were looking at as a concern is that if we did not have for our vote, let's say, or for a core, a breakdown that would reflect the breakdowns that we have to have. Let's say that for some reason there was a vote and none of the clergy showed up, wouldn't they still be allowed to have a vote if the clergy component of the required components weren't on?
So back to what I was, the point that I was making is that half of 11, it's five and a half. We round up to six, just all we can go round on the five. Majority of six is four. And there are four solo parents that aren't employees that make up the parents. So again, I don't understand the issue with the number of people or the number of parents or the number of teachers who are also parents. I don't understand the problem.
I agree. I feel like the math, the majority must be parents. And the math does work the way we have it here. The question I have is if the students are part of the 11 spots we have on the Sex Ed Advisory Board or did not. So are we looking at 11 plus two or are we looking at nine plus two to get to that 11 seats that we have?
Understood it. It is, there are 11 positions, of the 11 positions, at least one needs to be.
That was my understanding as well. We did write two students in.
As a, as a proof, where up to?
Up to two, yeah. And then to circle back to the vote, I know we've had part of that discussion earlier, especially considering our mission and vision that is empowering students. I feel like having students without a vote values to some degree that are good. And I would hope that if we, we have to have students and that they would be considered full members, including a vote. Knowing that at any point they're not comfortable, they can always choose to stay. I also, as part of that argument, I feel that we have to remember that just like all our committee boards that we have, those are recommending bodies of, I mean, it's not a, by now that we have a Sex Ed Advisory Board, but they recommend, we still get two people. And with that in mind, to me, then it makes it a little less important whether we have one or two, whether we have 11. Like they are still a recommending body and they still have our oversight. And so if people worry about students get, you know, if we have two students that vote, that's a heavier weight, you know, to remind everybody that, you know, we're not, we still get the final say on whatever happens there. And so to me, that it's not that it's a mistake. It just changes the perspective a little bit in that to remember what we do, that we still value the work, we highly value recommendations that happen. Then again, the second, the way that happens, just like our, which is self without diversity and creating inclusion task force. Those are heavy decisions. So we need, there's a lot of work that we respect, but also to understand that they remain recommendations. And so I'd like us, and we've talked about this every evening, to get to some agreement that the Sex Ed Advisory Board can continue to move forward. And I just wanted to point that out. It doesn't mean that we shouldn't care about the number of students. We have to fold it all. It helps me think about it in a little bit of different context, but I remember here we can recommend.
The other thing I'd like to highlight is it was important to everyone that the number on the board be an odd number and not an even number. That could help the votes. When you have an even number, you could have literally a 50/50. And so that was the other thing that was a concern. They wanted to keep this, the total number to be even.
It's a letter.
Our current policy here.
So this, I'm trying to remember the previous conversation. Does the number of students on the board impact all of the ratios that were just given? I know this year we had two numbers, but I feel, did we only have 11 people on the board? Or was that an act for a reduction this upcoming year because it was kind of too many?
They were 14.
Okay, and so.
They asked for that.
Okay, that's okay. I remember that correctly. So then I guess my question comes up with, with stu, the difference between one student and two students. Does that impact the ratio of the way that this all breaks down with the percentages?
I think one student, I just want to know if it's correct. One student was always already counted in that one. So if we're only adding another student, so the ratios worked out on, if we're adding another student, then that becomes 12, which is less than ideal. If we bump it up to 13 and add another adult, then I think it would have to be a parent probably.
I think the way it would work is if we had two students, it would still be 11. There would be two students. Right? Because the total number is 11. So and at one of them, our current bylaws, one of them shall be a student, which will have the ability to vote. So, and at one of them, our current bylaws, one of them shall be a student, which will have the ability to vote. But you could have up to two students. But also, I'm sure there could be two students, but one not have a vote or authority to be part of the conversation, right? It's a public meeting. But right now, the way it is, is 11 seats, one needs to be a student that votes. You could have two students, but we have to have at least one student.
If one student, wouldn't it be like the majority of any vote?
The way the math works out.
I don't think two, I don't think two students would be either, they'd be, if you just have a bare form, students would not be a majority.
So you would have nine non-students and two students potentially? That is not a majority unless others don't show up.
If, that maybe don't show that they don't have a form.
Yes.
Never a majority. The other thing I want to point out, and that is one modification that we would like to see to the current Sex Ed Advisory Board bylaws, is how these students are, um, um, how do they get on the board? Uh, how do they get picked? And there was, there's currently no shortage, and I feel like, you know, some of the concerns we hear is protecting our students, making sure that, um, there's some check and balances. And I would like to see it addressed, um, um, you know, and I would even suggest maybe bringing a third entity, maybe the high school administration, as a way to, to make sure that, you know, personal vice is given away, um, who gets appointed as a student to that Sex Ed Advisory Board.
So Article E is the application and nomination appointment provision of section. And in section one, it says, "Any interested person may submit an application for consideration as the potential nominee of the Sex Ed Advisory Board." Non-student applications will be available as needed by the office of public schools. Student applications will be made available each spring semester for the upcoming academic year. Student members must have a pair of guardian information to participate in this Sex Ed Advisory Board. And it goes out that they all follow the same type of process for identification and recommendations for, for that next line of.
So who chooses, right? You get 22 students?
They make a recommendation from the school board and then the school board determines.
So if you have 22 certified, a Sex Ed Advisory Board, the ways you read it and I just know that identifies, that says two, two students, and then we approve that choice.
We approve, again, they are recommended?
They're recommended, yeah.
I think though, what kind of goes along with that, with that recommendation, with the idea is, we don't know the, so if, if the idea of a larger, um, policy is that a student is in good standing with grades to be on an extra, if this is considered like an extracurricular activity, the idea of having administration help make that decision, because we obviously don't want the students' grades or their standing, and neither does the Sex Ed Advisory Committee. Um, is there an additional way to kind of communicate that? Like, is there a check and balance where an administrator is signing off saying this child, or this student is in good standing?
There's a, uh, at least a staff member that is managing the whole in-school process.
Perfect.
So can we go to some kind of instance of what we'd like to, um, report back to our Sex Ed Advisory Board?
So really, the question is, do we want to modify the current bylaws that we have already approved? And if so, what component do we want to modify? Based on the letter recommendation that came from the Sex Ed Advisory Board? Oh, we do always, I mean, we always modify anything that might inspire any component of that. But in general, that's kind of what's before us right now, is the modifications that they are recommending.
So there's two, um, recommendations. So do we both have each recommendation or do we?
There would be, have to be a motion for a board member to make that modification to the bylaw.
We can, we can have an emotion both together?
Sorry, I think we want no motion.
Right, here in the next part of the meeting, this is just the discussion, right?
I mean, one thing I would like to add right now is I am quite certain that, um, the law is silent on the composition of a quorum. Right, in terms of who has to be there, what kind of representations are there. Uh, we've been over the fact that the law has opinions about the numbers of the Sex Ed Advisory Board. But this proposed bylaw language about quorum and meetings, that, that's extra. I don't believe that that's in any order required by law. I'm just putting that out there as a statement.
There are many components in this that are not required?
Yeah, I know that. I just wanted to be, that to be very clear.
I read that the law is controlling a lot of where do they have the authority, what kind of curriculum component? And then who has to be a committee of the board to help make that modification? That's pretty much the law. And everything else is stuff that we've added for, for the Sex Ed Advisory Board has kind of its recommendation. Based on the practice or things that they've learned and not like to have any place to provide better structure for that. Really, since we're really out of conversation, because there is under some new business.
Right, under new business, there'll be an opportunity to make an amendment, to make a motion, should it what we want.
Any, I mean, I know that there was a lot of questions last time. Do we feel like these questions are answered? Do you have a little more carry on this?
I guess just my, my one question, so, just so I'm completely clear. The two primary decisions that we're looking at is the, first off, the, the number of students and their voting ability. And then, I guess I'm a little unclear, so, um, if somebody can help me, what is the second one specifically? That it's the number or the ratio?
Can I add a point clarification there? It's not on the number of students because the bylaws say up to two. So they just select one, they can select two if they want it. Um, but the question is about their, no matter how many students there are, whether or not they can vote.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, in the letter, it, the motion for amendment to the SCA bylaws, um, the MPPS SCA moves for the amendment to the Article F, Section 2C, um, to remove the entire section, Article F, Section 3D. Student members, yeah, up to two high school students for nine through 12, may be appointed to the SCA in an ex official role. So we know that ex official role is a non-voting role. So that's a specific recommendation or amendment to the bylaws.
Thank you. So if we, we can choose to not follow that recommendation, keep the bylaws as well, which means our students up to two would be voting. We don't change anything, right, that they would be voting?
Just to clarify, is the second paragraph at the beginning of the letter?
And then the second one, um, if we don't change it, it doesn't, we, we don't, the quorum does not have to be a specific makeup. Um, the sub of the committee and the change that the Sex Ed Advisory Board's letter is asking us to consider is, um, that that sub, that quorum be consistent with the makeup required by law. That, that makes sense? So if there's 11 that age, one of, you know, if it's up five, if six people show up, that the percentage remains of the bigger group. If we choose not to, um, make those changes and, um, keep it at, it's then, it would just be four. There's no specification on the makeup of that subgroup. Does that make sense?
That does.
So just to help clarify, um, the second paragraph is moving students to be in ex official role. And then the fourth paragraph in the letter is the amendment of Article J, Section 6, requesting revision to incorporate language that reflects that representation from all official member groups required, uh, all official member groups required by the state of Michigan. Again, in the law, as defined in Article F, Section 2A, be, be present to achieve war.
Or we can follow the recommendation and vote for that. Do you have a side of?
So we can either do nothing, right, that's option one, and say, no, we like the original, if we're approved by laws, no changes. Or we can make one of those changes, make a motion to accept it, that they are may not pass. Same thing for the second change they, they, they ask for, we can, um, have a motion, it may or may not pass. Or we have a third option, is we rewrite something yet different than what is currently approved or what the Sex Ed Advisory Board is suggesting. So that's our kind of free pathways. Does that, that make sense?
And any of that would happen under?
None of it happens right now, no. Okay, you visit all those every fresh hour?
Okay. So we're good with that topic for now. We'll move on to our policy review section of my report. This evening, we're looking at 5801 section, which is miscellaneous. I don't really think we're able to look at that term.
Yeah, I have the table, um, with one grammar comments on each policy.
Just kidding. So we'll start Policy 5801, which is our closed campus policy. Are there any questions there?
There is no questions or comments on the document.
Policy 5802, student transportation.
So I have one in there. I, I don't have a problem with the policy. I did find it, um, a bit stark, like, and, and it's a privilege, and, and I, we've discussed transportation over the years a number of times. Yeah, I felt like that was the only spot of the 5801 where we could go back to having a paragraph at the beginning that kind of softens the tone or, or, you know, restate our, um, our intent. Um, and so it could be just one sentence, um, I'm guessing most of the language is by law right now.
Is there, is there word privileges to be used in this?
Um, student does not have a right, let me see, where is it? Maybe it's another one. Uh, so a student does not have a right to disprove private transportation. Um, and so that, that makes part of the sentence that, um, I, yeah.
Okay.
Would that be okay with everyone?
Uh, Policy 5803, student driving and parking?
There was no comments on this one.
Uh, Policy 5804, work permits.
I, I did not, I wasn't sure what a work permit was in the context of our school district.
So our, our work permit authorizer is sitting right over here, so, uh, and we've heard around that students that are younger than 16 and have a work permit in order to work. So they, they go and get a job at McDonald's, they bring a permit to the vocational office, they sign it, and take it back to McDonald's during the summer. Kevin is also authorized to sign them, his folks are in and out, um, so it's just for anyone that's under 16 that's getting a job.
And that's not specific to just this district? Where's that form located?
State law.
State law, yeah, so they can download the form and anybody in the state can take it into their school who meets that criteria.
And so the school has to sign off this if you're under 16? That's a full responsibility?
Right.
No, I don't.
Correct, and there are some checks here.
Yeah, that's, the school and the employer, they all have to have input on that form.
Yeah, makes sense. I can see that. I was not aware that that's something we did.
Especially for students that could potentially be in like a safety sensitive, you know, can they work with knives? You know, those kinds of things, so, um, and it, and it is very, um, very clear, like, with Pat moving into his new role, we had to make sure that that authority was transferred over to him, we had to make sure that Kevin has that authority during the summer. So it is fairly, um, rigid as far as those requirements go, but the, the text header keeps us honest as far as that goes.
Thank you for explaining that to me.
You also have to give a new permit if they change jobs with the new.
He must be doing this a lot. There's a lot of our students that are under 16 that are working.
And I think it's under 17.
Is that under 17?
Yeah, there's, yeah, anything, any minor that, and depending on the category of employment as well, there are, it's a stack of laundry lists of different type of requirements and whether it's a family owned business, a proprietorship, I mean, there's, yes. And the student has to be present for that to have, to take place as well.
Is it, does I, I'm sorry, I'm just curious, is it including summer work?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, it does.
And that's why we have to have Kevin authorized during.
Yeah, no, I get this one, that, I don't know.
Okay.
Yeah, there's only a few, there's only a few, like, specific jobs where they do not have to. You know, once again, that's more of a family farm situation or, you know, more relative type thing, but typically, yes, it's required.
Okay. So we'll move on to Policy 5805, student audio and video recording.
There was no comments.
Uh, 5806, recording of district meetings.
So we had several comments on this, and the first one, it made sense, so make another one to you.
I can't find mine.
Oh, I can read it.
That part.
Why does the parent have to give advance notice about recording a meeting?
So under A, where it says that they, it's, I just wondered why they have to give advance notice ahead of the meeting if they're going to record. Why can't they just say that before the meeting starts in person?
I, I can check, and that, that could just be a courtesy so that, um, I believe typically if a parent is recording a meeting, we would also record the meeting so that we would both have a recording. Um, but let me verify that with a trune. That's why they have that in there.
If it isn't, I could be at that part?
It, the live, sure.
So we could even just change before the date of the scheduled meeting to before the time of the scheduled meeting so that it gives us a little flexibility and it could be right before.
I appreciate the context of why I'm thinking that way.
What other questions on this policy?
I, uh, that's a corroborate issue. The first sentence of Section B grammatically did not make sense to me, and I can read it. Parents, guardians may not record any other meeting absent the prior written approval of the superintendent. I think we're just missing a word. May not record any other meeting, I don't.
You mean without?
Without. With prior written approval. So it said the absence is without.
Yeah, I think that's, it's a little. I think that's legalese, but we can change the order to send to that. I guess I just had a little bit of a question about this too, because we, we know for certain that our deep org meetings have been recorded by people. I mean, are we supposed to be ever doing anything about it? I mean.
We've got, we've got it forward.
So this, this isn't so bad.
That's such a different. But it, it, I did have to read this law several times, um, in the fact that it felt contradicting to each other, but actually it was exceptional. And so I think one confusion I had, exception A, um, is for audio recording of IEP team and Section 5 of four meetings, which will allow the finer notice. And then Section D is there will be no recordings of any sort. And so really, uh, Section A is an exception of that, and I didn't know if we could even change the order or the wording so that he can understand it's just, there are exceptions to this. There's no recordings besides IEP, 5 of 4, and open meeting hours. And so having that approved in the front would have.
So perhaps make B, A, and then you have the exceptions after that?
Something like that.
Would that make better sense for everyone? Anything else on that policy?
I didn't check. Nope, that's it.
Okay. And then the last one in the section is 5807.
So there was a question from P D that I can read, since she's not here tonight. She asked if we could add to the last sentence of the policy where it states that students, um, would not be bullied if they, uh, if not, they choose not to recite the pledge. Uh, if we could add it both ways, choose, um, that they are not bullied for not reciting or for reciting the pledge, that it goes, uh, in both directions. That, but you guys have your last sentence of that.
And she has talked to me about that before, so I can, I can follow the trune. Anything else on this section of policy? I know it's a rather short section. Um, I, I did want to let you all know that we have received, um, truans, um, biannual update to policies. And so, um, we probably do need to rework our plan with the policies and bring in the updates, um, at our next meeting. Um, and I say that because there are, are several policies that are updated in order for them to be consistent with state law. And I want to make sure that our policies are up to date and consistent with state law prior to the start of school especially. So, um, if you're. So if you recall, when we took, when we transferred two truans policies, they do not require two readings, but our board still wanted to do two readings. There is one policy that is the update to our Title IX classes. And I would hope that we could look at that and possibly approve that after one reading simply because of the timing. That really needs to be in place by the first quarter of August. Then the other updates, I believe we can do the two August update, or the two August readings and sorry, and then have them in place prior to the start of the school year. So we might sort of take a side, sidestep from this work, get that taken care of and then keep moving forward. And I inserted a chart that shows which policies we have pending that they also have updates to, so it's sort of a complex matrix, but we'll, we'll get it together and make sure that we're consistent.
That makes sense.
Any policy questions before I move on? I just wanted to give a couple of quick updates. First, in regards to our bio projects this summer, we have a lot of work that's happening in our district, but it isn't the kind of work that you can necessarily see like we've had, you know, like last summer with the track and the weight rooms and that sort of thing, so probably the most obvious to our community are our new parking lots. We do have new parking lots that have been completed at the middle school and at Bowles. We are trying to keep vehicles off of those parking lots as long as possible, given the heat and humidity, we want to make sure that the asphalt has adequate time to cure and everything, but they look beautiful if you think of a parking lot, but they're really pretty, so we should check those out if you have time. And then the other work that we're doing is really important internal work, but it's sort of hard for our community to see what's happening. We are continuing to work on air handling systems primarily at the Muffins and Middle School and at Fancher. You'll recall those systems, we started the updating process last summer and they're really working on finishing that process this summer. So that involves a lot of things like ductwork in the ceilings, unit vents in classrooms, but that will eventually allow us to be able to process hot and cool air through both of those buildings. So they're big, big projects and we're fairly confident that Fancher will be set and ready to go by the start of the school year. The middle school, given the size of that building, we're really hoping that we'll be ready to go by the start of the school year. But it may, there may be some calibration that's happening during the month of September, so we're still waiting on that. We're also starting phase one of those systems at Pollin and at McQuire. So if you drive by those buildings, you'll notice instruction vehicles and those kinds of things, but again, a lot of the work is happening internally. So for all of our buildings, this is a two-year process. We'll go do the first part of the process at Pollin and McQuire this summer, the second part next summer, and then the new systems will be out and running for the start of the next school year. And then the last two buildings that we'll bring in will be Bowles and Fancher. So the projects are going well. They're, they're big, big projects with a lot of mechanical work, but things are going well. We are also updating the lighting systems in the auditorium and that also is going well. We do expect that that'll be done and ready to go for the start of the year. And then finally, boilers in this building and then the tech center are being installed. So not the, you know, not the projects where we can see big signs that say, pardon our dust, which I love, but really some important work that's happening to make our buildings safer and more comfortable for everybody, so. Does anyone have any questions about bio projects? The other piece, certainly our bio project is to include, continue to upgrade to technology. So join his team, continue to work on that. And then also transportation, we have a fleet replacement schedule, so we'll be ordering a new bus here pretty soon and continue to post it yourself. And there are shiny ones. And then just the last thing, I want to quickly see if I can get it up here. Just wanted to make sure that our community is aware, we do have, this is where it's on. We do have three seats up for election. On our school board and the deadline for application is actually next week, next Tuesday, July twenty-third. Any interested applicants need to complete any application or that is well, county courts office by four o'clock next Tuesday. And their office is moved to five-ten West Pickard, given what's happened with the county building downtown. So we want to make sure that folks are aware of that publicly. We have two seats that are for a full six-year term and then one seat that is a two-year term.
And I, would you even correct me if I'm not correct that when you submit your paperwork, you have to specify, correct, whether you want the six-year term or the two-year term? And so there are kind of two different subject connections.
Yes, yes. Thank you. And that's all for my report this time.
Thank you, gentlemen. Next, is there any question, financial reports?
Yes, Nina here for you and your bar tickets and financial reports for general funds, special service funds, for revenue and expenditure comparison reports, actual to budget for month ending June two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, June two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four. I'll just kind of mention this, these are a good annualized book as of right now, but we are still accruing a bunch of expenditures back in the prior year, so it's, this is not a fine outlook at June. For general funds, you see that our revenues and expenditures are really right on target across all the years. Revenue is slightly higher this year over last, and that's really just because it's all part of our grant funding that we have. For our special service funds, you see all of them there, we have our self-sustaining sports and athletics, the children's learning center, the nurse testing program, that just has fun balance for studying down, the food service program and the school store here at the tech center. The nature of these is all of a place, so it, it looks all over the place, and that's okay. For the treasures report, for general fund, on May thirty-first, we have a cash balance of eight point seven million dollars. For the month of June, we have income of six point four and dispersments of five point one. That brings us to cash balance on June thirtieth of ten million dollars. For the debt retirement fund, on May thirty-first, we have six hundred and fifteen thousand. We have another income, two hundred and seventy-eight dollars, dispersments of four hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars. That brings us to balance on June thirtieth of one hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars. And for our capital projects funds, on May thirty-first, we have twenty-three point seven million dollars, interest income of one hundred thousand in the month of June and dispersments of three hundred and sixty-three thousand. We have that process of balance on June thirtieth of twenty-three point five million dollars. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have correspondence. We received correspondence from Michigan Health Foundation. So maybe more, they were thanking us for donation.
Yeah, so the correspondence is the thank you for the donation that our students made to Michigan Health through the management.
Next is our citizens request to address the board. I don't know if we have any, no, we tonight, we don't have any. That brings us to our concept agenda. Our first item on our concept agenda is the approval of the minutes of the June twenty-four, twenty twenty-four regular meeting minutes. Do we have a motion?
The vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, everybody. We have to approve the bills as well. We have a motion to approve the bill.
Sober.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Under new business, we have the MHSAA resolution that we talked about earlier this evening.
So you're back at this evening, you have that MHSAA membership resolution that goes from August first, twenty twenty-four, July thirty-first of twenty twenty-five. And again, like Jason mentioned, it basically just said that we agree, we wish to be members of the missionized bloodline association for the next school year. And that would be the schools that are members of the Muffins and High School and Muffins and Middle School. So we're asking that you approve this this evening and because it is a resolution.
Do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
Sober.
So welcome. Amy Barcas? Will you handle yes?
Can we work it, yes.
Ms. Simoncic, yes.
Ms. Thompson, yes.
Ms. Jergen, yes. Thank you, everybody. Next item in the new business is our sex ed advisory board's five dollars. So if you recall, we have three options available, we'd like you to restate so that it would be secure or you're good. Yes, and so option one is we choose not to change the April approved five dollars, so we make no changes. So we don't take any action and we decide that we are good with the way they are currently. Option two is we can choose to have a motion to approve the first recommendation of the letter, which was to change the five dollars so that our students are tax official, that in there would be members but not voting members. We could have a motion, a second or not, and we can vote yes or no. We can do the exact same process for the second change of the five dollars where the forum, if it's, would have to be a specific composition that matches that of what's required for the approved five dollars. And we can do the same thing, we can have a motion, we can vote yes or no. Or the third option is to say we change the five dollars with different language than what is suggested by the sex ed advisory board. Great, I'm going to open this.
I will make a motion that we. Move forward with the five dollars the way they are, no changes.
Second. I think that it goes up to a vote, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? I think we have given clear guidance to our sex ed advisory board and to let them forward. I appreciate your time, even though we took several meetings, I really do want to acknowledge that I like how we really do make sure we understand our requirement by law and that we take this with, you know, seriously, even, and I'm sure for the public, you know, there's a lot of talking, but I appreciate everyone's patience. I think it's, we have to make sure we understand that it's here and I like to not be so quick about your messaging. I also want to thank the sex ed advisory board because they also have these conversations. It takes time to craft letters, it takes time to come up with recommendations and that we do value the work even though sometimes we may disagree. Great. That concludes that section. We have board resignations this evening as well. Yes, we would like the board to recognize the resignation of Kithen Jones, a JSRP teacher from Rosewood, and Lisa Northrup, a third grade teacher from Marywater. Do we have a motion to accept the resignations?
Sober. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Sorry to interrupt, but we have new hires. Yes, we're very excited to bring out some new teachers this year. Alexandra Forrest here in the audience with us tonight. Alexandra was brave enough to teach a lesson to fourth and fifth grade students at Peak for her second interview, so we really appreciate her efforts on that on a hot summer day. Shaylor Mallory is also here, she is joining Fancher as a fifth grade teacher. And Madison Cridgen, fourth grade at McQuire, and Hannah Wanko, third grade at McQuire. Do we have a motion to approve any hires?
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you and welcome to the district. And thank you specifically for our board meeting, policies and sex ed advisory board discussions. We're excited to have you. And that leads us to our Board of Education discussion. Anybody who would like to share something? You have any topics to discuss today?
I'm going to reiterate the same thing, I just said it, but I really do like how we take our time on the things, you know, even when there is controversies, even when there might be internal pressure to make a decision, I like that we are transparent, we explain the process, we take the time it takes. And so thank you, everybody, for all the work.
I know this section of the meeting room isn't that big, but just to point out the bags behind us, our summer food program is going game clusters, has done, have folks come to food, they are a well-oiled machine. We're distributing around five hundred fifty bags of meals to students every Wednesday so that's five hundred fifty bags of seven breakfasts and seven lunches going out to our community. Plus, we're feeding all the students at Peak, at Bowles, in Ganyar, in, we have families that are coming and eating in the building. So it is a huge program and I'm thrilled that we can do it and we just want to make sure that folks take advantage of it, so.
That note about the food program, do they have to be Muffins at those school stores?
No.
So there's no checking?
No, they don't, they don't have to reside in Isabella County, they don't have to come live in the state of Michigan, they can just come and say, I've got three children under the age of whatever and can do everything, they give you a nice little menu that kind of maps out the plan of what to eat when, how to prepare the food. It's, it's, they really have done a nice job. They give gallons of milk, I mean, it is, it's impressive. Jennifer, could you pass us or put in the shared garage some of those menus? I'd love to see one in Sharon. We do find one, yeah, yeah, it's great, they, I mean, they just have really done, you know, every summer, we get better at this and we sort of upped our game, but they just have really done a really nice job this summer, so I'll definitely get that one, so you can see it.
There's also like a positive opportunity for community impact with that as well, because like if your child is two and, you know, they're giving a whole gallon of milk, like that might be a lot, but there's a note on there that says here are like the food pantry here's places where you can donate, like if you're not going to utilize all that milk or if you drink like a different kind of milk and it's not. How's milk a little bit of a problem?
That, that is good, because they do have to give all of the components, so milk is probably something, because I think ginger, each child gets a whole gallon, right? It's, it's a lot, and so, so I can see where some families are like, we're never going to drink this much, so right on the menu it says, these are the places where you can donate, so it's helpful.
I do have the whole month of July menu, so I'll put it out in the. Super, like what part do you want of the super?
Yeah, I agree, thank you.
Thank you.
So this is a question that I shared, that's interesting, too. Do we pay dues to be a part of the MHSAA?
We don't pay dues to be a part of the MHSAA, but different events, there is a percentage of the gay, the big end, everything, so in Jason's report, he had the list of all the district things that we hosted. And you remember, he said that we get the concessions, so the gate for those go primarily to MHSAA and now they're all taking his at golfing. They used to be sort of on the honor system of the school where we would say, yes, we have five hundred people there and here's your percentage. Now, MHSAA, you purchase those tickets directly through them and so then they give us a kickback. So we do get something for hosting, but the lion's share of the gate revenue goes to MHSAA.
Thank you. Oh, I just, again, one more thing. The segmental tribal or tribe powwow, one of the two powwows is happening at the end of this month, so the last school weekend in July, which I, I don't know, I can't remember if I remember, it's the twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth.
This one's right, twenty-sixth, forty-fourth.
Thank you, twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth, so there will be great entries all three days, so I can, out there in the support of our charge of tribal.
And then they can, you didn't jump out of my memory, as you, community may have come tonight, our diversity inclusion and equity task force does have some always opening, always welcoming new members, applications are going to be out, I think probably pretty soon, if they're not already. Applications happen through the rest of July and August and we go through a very transparent process to onboard as many community members as we can. And then you hear the decision early September and the task force meets the fourth Monday of every month whenever we can, it's amazing how many conferences will happen, to Monday night from six-thirty to eight, until you're here before that first September meeting. All right, well, thank you, everybody. All right, well, thank you, everybody, and this meeting is adjourned.